Good evening, everyone. I've called this school board meeting to order this evening. I thank the board and staff for being here along with those attending tonight and those that are listening online. I don't know how many that is, but welcome. Thanks to Chippewa Valley Community Television for recording this tonight so that we can share it in perpetuity, I kind of say, and the Memorial Culinary Arts Program for the cookies, which I would imagine are over there. So make sure you have a cookie or take one with you. So let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Patty, are we in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. Can you take a roll call for our verification of our small horn tonight?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
Commissioner Luganville?
Here.
Commissioner Vu is absent. Commissioner Torres is absent. Commissioner Bika?
Here.
And Commissioner Dux is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to our public forum. At each school board meeting, we have a 30-minute time period set aside to, in which our citizens of our community may address the board to express their viewpoints or concerns on the agenda, non-agenda items. We don't talk about specific personnel, but we enjoy this part of our board meeting in order to connect with our community. So we have three people signed up tonight. You have up to four minutes to speak to the board. We don't interact at this time, but know that we appreciate you coming and connecting with your school board. So the first person on our list is Selika Lawton. Please state your name and your address, please. Sorry. Do it every time you come.
Okay, because I don't have very much voice today. Just bad sinuses. My name's Selika Duxworth-Lawton, 2211 Vianantares, Eau Claire. And I guess I'll be back up a little later about the Martin Luther King Commendation. But I signed in to be able to tell people a little bit more about Uniting Bridges. Uniting Bridges runs both the Martin Luther King Remembrance and the Juneteenth Celebration here in Eau Claire. We also are moving on to partner with other organizations, and we're also beginning to partner with Eau Claire Area School Districts to work on issues of racial bridging and bringing people together. So we are hoping sometime in the future to be able to do a couple of public panels. One would be with Eau Claire School District and maybe to talk about police in schools. And a second one would be, we know that we're in the planning stage with Chippewa Valley Museum, to bring people together to talk about how we can apply lessons of history to the issues we have in today's locality and use local history in order to not reinvent reals when we're trying to solve problems. So if you are interested in racial bridging, you're looking for these, you're looking for an organization to help, to volunteer with, we have a webpage. It's at Wix. We have a Facebook page under both the Martin Luther King Program, Eau Claire Martin Luther King Remembrance, and Eau Claire Juneteenth Celebration. And I am on the university's webpage at duckswsm@uwec.edu, or basically put Selika into the webpage, S-E-L-I-K-A. I'm the only one there. So if you're interested in these issues and want to talk to us about this or to address our board, please contact me or Burl Middleton.
Thank you. Thank you, Selika. Second person on our list is Erica Zur. Please state your name and address. Hi, Erica.
Hello. My name's Erica Zur. I live at 1907 Badger Avenue in Eau Claire, and I'm here representing Indy and the Little Red Nature Campus Team tonight. We appreciate your time and attention at your December 18th meeting. We were very gratified by your comments and support of the project and by those made by members of the public that evening. But we also heard your questions and concerns. Commissioner Bika specifically requested that we follow up with her on her questions, and we did that in writing. Hopefully, you received those answers in preparation for this meeting. So I just wanted to come up and talk about some additional questions and concerns that were voiced that evening. We wanted to give you a quick update on those. I think there were three main topics that were discussed that night: diversity, budget, and serving educationally disadvantaged students. So on diversity, I just wanted to give you kind of a brief update about what we've been up to. We recognize, Indy recognizes that we are a small group, and for this project to succeed, we will need to include a diverse array of voices in our planning process. Since your last meeting, our Diversity Committee has been working on a list of individuals and groups that we could provide, that could provide some diverse perspectives on our team, and have begun reaching out to those contacts. We also underwent a culturally and linguistically responsive school development training with Kristin Gundry of CISA. Should you approve further work tonight, we look forward to ramping up our outreach efforts in this area and building a strong diverse project planning team. The budget was also discussed that evening. At least three commissioners mentioned their concerns on how the district would pay for this program. We realize the significance of this issue, but feel that it is not an issue that we can talk about in detail yet. Of course, we'd like to pursue the DPI grant for assistance with startup costs and would like your permission to do other fundraising needed to ready the building and fund the creation of our program. Once up and running, the objective is for the program to be cost neutral, or if possible, cost even less than is typical in our district due to some non-traditional and cost-saving elements, like being teacher-led, which means no principal to pay for, and having students assist with traditionally paid positions such as lunch preparation and cleaning. As we said last time, the program is not complete, so it would be premature for us to offer assurances at this time. But we are hopeful that our program will create a facility that is innovative in both its educational model and its allocation of resources. On educationally disadvantaged students, we gave some preliminary answers in our letter to the board on how we think project-based learning could be an effective model to use with many of these learners. But we know we need to further develop our approach to ensure that educationally disadvantaged students find our school, gain admission, and flourish during their time there. Our team has applied to attend the Every Teacher a Leader Northwest Regional Summit on March 9th and 10th. Our application focused on how to best recruit and retain educationally disadvantaged students. If accepted, we will receive small group coaching at that event. As we stated during our full presentation, we are asking the board to partner with us in this endeavor and endorse the work of developing this program. We are incredibly grateful for your time and your feedback. It has inspired us to dive deeper into our program and strengthen our understanding of what it means to be a highly successful school. We look forward to considering your input and answering questions during our agenda time tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Erica. And the third person on our list is Karen Pikeert. Hi, Karen.
Hi, Karen Pikeert, 1305 Ponderosa Drive. I'm here tonight because I read in the paper that you were going to be discussing special education tonight, and I'm here with my friend Beth Ivankovic, and we are two of the four officers of the newly formed Special Education PTA in the Eau Claire Area School District. We just started our formal meetings this year, and we're very, very excited by the response that we've gotten from other parents. We feel very supported by the staff at the buildings and here at the board office. And I just wanted to let you know, for those of us, for those of you that haven't been to one of our meetings, Joe's been to meetings and Jim's been to our meetings, that we say that we're all ears, and that means we are about education, advocacy, resources, and support. And so we really aim to not only support families, but also support the district. We really aim to be partners in what's going on in our district, and we're really excited for what we are building. We realize it's going to take a while. It's been a long time since this district has had an organization such as this, but we are really making some meaningful relationships and partnerships are beginning now. So we just wanted to identify ourselves, and as you talk about these special education issues, we are the people you're talking about. We are the people whose kids have autism, can no longer stay in school, and are placed at the academy or are placed at Cal or clinic. We are the people with 504 plans, whose kids can't function in the school because of high anxiety and are doing online learning. These are real families and real issues, and it is near and dear to our hearts. So we just wanted to make sure that you pictured us and our kids when you had these discussions. The other thing that I was excited to be here is when you were talking about the proposed Little Red Charter School. I hope that as you consider the diversity issues at that charter school, you will also be considering special education students, because that is a very important part of the diverse population that we have in our district. And many, many of the special education students would greatly benefit from the project-based learning, environmental focus, and the opportunities that, and I've only read in the paper, I haven't been here at the meetings. But I'm super excited that you're considering it, and I'm excited that this might be an opportunity for some of our special education students as well. So thank you for your discussion of special education tonight and for giving me your time.
Thanks, Karen. Thank you, Selika, Erica, and Karen. That concludes our public forum portion of the school board meeting, and we will go on now to our superintendent's report. Dr. Hardbeck, who's been sick all day, so we're kind of taking care of her here. So Mary, Dr. Hardbeck.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to review our upcoming events until our next board meeting. Tomorrow, there is a meeting of the LEAP Committee. It will take place at 4 o'clock here at the Administration Building. That will be followed on January 18th by a meeting of Demographic Trends and Facility Committee, and that will take place at 4:30 p.m. at the Administration Building. And then Policy and Governance will meet on January 22nd at 8:45 a.m., which will be followed by a regular school board meeting, and that will be at 7 p.m. So this week, last week, we had the opportunity to host a governor's visit to view youth apprenticeships in our district, and it was a very exciting event at North. We were able to show off the work and our partnership and our longstanding partnership with RCU and the improvements that they have made to North's building in terms of really putting a working credit union within the building, having it staffed by students. And we also hosted students from Memorial who work in Memorial's RCU facility, and they were able to share with the governor how they feel that this program has been very beneficial to them, not only in terms of perhaps future career aspirations, but also in terms of financial literacy. That was followed by a visit with two of our Memorial students who talked about their work in robotics at Reality Works. And that was very exciting to see the kind of work that they're doing that's actually being marketed by Reality Works. So these are things that have come to us. We have youth apprenticeships at Plank Enterprises. We have them in Excel Energy. Right now, we have 25 youth apprenticeships in place, and we hope to build on this. And this is one more step in having a post-secondary experience for every student by the time they graduate from high school. So it was exciting, it was exciting just to be able to talk about our partnerships and host our partners, and we had representatives from RCU there, and we had representatives from Reality Works. And to hear them talk about our students and the work that our students are doing was very, very gratifying. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Hardbeck. Takes us to my report as president of the board. We presently, excitedly, have seven community members who stepped up to run for school board. Three of them are incumbents: Joe Luganville, who will have been on the board for a complete term of three years when he runs again; Lori Bika, who's been on the board since June of 2017; and Eric Torres, who has been on the board since April of 2017. Other candidates are Tim Norden. I think, Tim, you're in the audience. Do you want to, you're waving, so you might want to wave again so people can tell. There you go. Thanks, Tim. Then Joshua Clements. Is Joshua here tonight? No, and I know they all can't be here. And I know Lori Klinkheimer and John Plewa are also, Plewa are also running, and they're not here either. But each board meeting, I will ask, and so they can be introduced. There'll be four openings on the board, two full terms and two partial terms, completing terms vacated by Jennifer Fager, who took a job in Michigan, and then Carolyn Barstedt, who left the board before completing her term. For those interested in the candidates, you can start watching the newspaper and things within our community because, and I'll try to have a list of where the forums are going to be and those kinds of things too, so the community can participate in all of that. And I can't thank each and every one of these seven community members running enough for taking that on. So thank you. Martin Luther King Junior Remembrance Event, I want to mention this, we'll bring it up again later. We've got a resolution we're talking about tonight. But the ceremony to commemorate the life of Dr. Martin Luther King will be 6 p.m. January 15th at St. James the Greater Catholic Church in Eau Claire. Board members are invited to attend. We look forward in the future, given our resolution and connection with the, depending on what happens with that tonight, to help maybe sponsor that event in the future. Okay? Our next board meeting is January 22nd. Will consist of a short business meeting. We said in January we're going to start having one work session a month so that we can get our governance and policies aligned, along with our own self-assessment and all those things. So we will go over our pending handbook aligning policy to the handbook and our governance structure at that work session. One of the policies that we need to revisit yearly for the first five years of its existence is our LEAP policy, so we're going to be spending some time with that. Along with that, we will have available our updated board workflow document, a draft of the handbook, with discussions to follow about what else needs to be defined in the handbook for board members. And one thing I have thought about since we put the draft together is making it stronger on what we offer our board members relative to public school funding and our budget. Because that is such a fluid document in the sense of what happens every year, every biennial budget, we got to pull people up to speed quicker, and so we're going to have a conversation on how we might do that, because we all have to be the same level discussing those things these days, just because it's that complicated. And then I think then we'll hold our board self-assessment to our February 19th work session, but Mary Ann and our meeting to plan some of that, so we'll keep you posted. So watch your emails, okay? Mary Ann, Joe, Catherine, Dux, Patty, and I will be attending the WASB convention next week. We will be attending even some pre-conference sessions on equity of programming, which I'm excited about being able to participate in. Joe is part of the State Resolution Committee with WASB, so he's, we're going to talk about that tonight, too. So he will be there, and then Catherine's the delegate for voting for us, so we're going to talk about some of that stuff tonight, too. So Lauren and Ryan, if you're into policy, we're going to, resolutions, we'll talk about that tonight. And then board members, we had Jim go today and find the Academic and Career Planning Guide. This is hot off the press, but we were really excited to look and see some of the new things that are being offered. And so you have one that you could peruse and feel proud that we're the school board of what's happening in this booklet, so thanks. And that concludes my president's report, and that will take us then on to our student rep reports. Who's going first tonight? Lauren's going first. Thanks, Lauren.
Hello. It's nice to see everybody again, because it's been a while. Tonight, I'd like to begin by voicing support for both the Little Red Nature Campus and for implementing the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service across the district on January 15th. As you mentioned, these new planning guides are really handy. Ryan and I were looking through them, and we're like, oh, it's color-coded, and there's all these new class offerings, including one class that had only been offered at CBTC, and I have known a lot of students have taken it, so it's nice to bring that into the high school. Since the last meeting, we had lunch discussions with students regarding GPA and class rank and reward, or award systems. And so we look forward to sharing those results with our subcommittee next Monday. But that concludes my report.
Thanks, Lauren. Ryan?
Good evening. Building off what Lauren said about the discussions that we had with students, it really came down to, are we going to weight grades or not weight grades in terms of calculating class rank? So that's a lot of what we got out of those discussions. We were also asked to look over the school resource officer. Of course, I know that was pulled off for tonight, but one thing that I said that, I think right away, that the student should be informed that they have a right to call their parent right away before any interview. But then, just some other thoughts on that. I just want to make sure that we don't, there's not like, we don't break this, have a strain on the relationship between the two. Like, if a kid wants to go talk to the resource officer, they don't have to go through a red tape, don't have to have the parent alerted. I want to make it easy to build a relationship, and I hope we just don't get in the way of that. That's the main thing I'm concerned about. And on a positive note, the DECA Club had a big competition in Menominee this weekend, and they won a lot of medals, I heard, so a lot of people were happy about that. Thank you.
Go Eau Claire Area School District. Thanks, Ryan. Then that takes us to our school board committee reports. I want to, I think, let me go first, because then I can pull up the rest of them to make sure. And mine isn't a standing committee, but I just want to report out on PAC. We met on January 2nd. Danny Klaskeis presented about our program to help ameliorate homelessness in the Eau Claire Area School District. Lot of interesting facts there. Presently, we are surveying approximately 183 families experiencing the event of homelessness in their lives. So the question was asked, how long do people stay homeless? And I felt the conversation we had with the answer to that was very interesting. Danny provided that the data, that 94% turnover in two years, which shows there's a pretty low recidivism rate, recidivism rate, right? Okay. And I said that really well when I went over this the first time. And I think that's interesting to know that. As our numbers of homeless children increased over time, Danny, who was associated with McKinley, our charter school, became full-time as a liaison for this program a couple years ago, with the district committing to a full-time position. I find that that is a wonderful contribution to our community as well. The other thing is, then, the PAC members also spent time listening to Jim give a synopsis of the law enforcement officials and school resource officers' policy, and then the PAC was welcome to give feedback, which has been compiled and given to the Policy and Governance Committee today, which we went over that. So Ryan, thanks for your input. We've got that, though, and that was talked a lot about today, so that's good. So that's the PAC committee report. Do we have a budget? Haven't met. Policy and Governance? Do you have one, Lloyd? Lloyd, do you have a committee?
I don't want to.
Okay. But we didn't finalize today, but we will vote on the new membership, because that, I think that's been done today, too. So go ahead. Joe?
Okay. So for a policy and governance update, we had one agenda item today, which took up two and a half hours, which was our Policy 445 on law enforcement officers and school resource officers. So as I've said before, this is the first time we're looking at updating this policy in 18 years. The group today talked about getting feedback from various groups. We've been working on sending out the draft policy to various community organizations, social justice organizations in the community, also sending it to the Eau Claire Police Department and the Eau Claire Sheriff's Department. So we talked about a number of different areas of the policy today. We went through it, looking through, we've kind of been looking in batches through all of our feedback. So today, we looked through feedback from some students and from a few of the elementary principals. We also looked through the feedback that we received from the Police Department. At our next meeting, the, let's see, it'll be on January 22nd, we will be looking through the feedback that we received from the Parent Advisory Council, as well as the ACLU of the Chippewa Valley, Uniting Bridges. And we will also then, on February 5th, be reviewing feedback from the secondary principals. So we have a lot of staff who are working really hard on getting that feedback, so I appreciate all of that work. And hopefully, by that first meeting in February, we'll be able to bring it here for the first opportunity for the board to take a crack at it, then I think we'll feel good about it enough at that point for the board to have a discussion. And then what we talked about today in committee was that in March, what we'd like to do is, before the board would vote on it, and a final vote that we'd like to do in March, some sort of a community panel or series of one or two community panels, where it would have representatives from the school district, Police Department, other community organizations, would provide an opportunity for the public to learn more and also to have an opportunity for input to the draft policy. And then hopefully, in that second meeting in March, we'd be able to have something for the board. So it's a pretty long process with this one, but we really want to do it right and have it see as many eyes as it can before we vote on anything. But again, I want to thank everyone, all of the different community groups who took a lot of time to write to us, the staff, so looking forward to getting even more feedback.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganville. And that takes us to our legislative report, which is you again, and I didn't forget this meeting.
Before I do that, I'll just share as a brief special education report, since I'm the special education liaison. It was mentioned the SEPTA, and I know it was brought up a couple days ago by a board member that they wanted to know when the meeting dates were, so I just sent you the link, everybody, so you can access their website and see their meeting dates and times. But the next one is coming up. It's January 11th, just a few days, at DeLong, and it starts at 7:00 and goes until 8:30, and it will be in the media center. And usually, how they structure the meetings is pretty cool. They have a learning opportunity first, and then they break out into discussions. So it's a really neat opportunity to hear real feedback. As far as my legislative update, I'll start up at the federal level, and then we'll slide our way down. So at the federal level, as some background, I brought it up before, the Children's Health Insurance Program. I have a little bit of an update. It has some positives, some negatives. This program provides health coverage to 9 million children from lower-income households that make too much money to qualify for Medicaid. The $2.85 billion Congress allocated December 21st was supposed to fund CHIP programs in all states through March 31st, but now they're already hearing that some states will begin exhausting all available funding earlier than others. So the exact timing of when states will exhaust their funding is going to vary, and it's a moving target, but federal health officials are saying that it won't stretch far enough as March 31st for all states. So a really good group to follow at the federal level is called First Focus, and they're a nonpartisan child advocacy group. And basically, their only job right now is badgering all of our members of Congress to get a long-term plan finalized by January 19th. And what is a good thing is, as of now, a five-year plan has been approved, but the plan to fund it has not. So we have got half of that part, and now it's the funding. So that group, again, is called First Focus, and they're doing a lot of good work that you can stay on top of. And of course, in our school district, we have a lot of students who, and students and families who receive health coverage through CHIP, and we have a lot of students in the state as well. So it of course matters in our district. We had the governor visit last week on Friday, and it was good to talk to him, thank him for his increase in funding in this last budget, and also for his support for school-based mental health, which is very important in our district and an ever-growing need. Also, he made a pledge to us as a district and to all districts to support increased funding for youth apprenticeship programs. So we'll hold him to that, and that's an exciting pledge. Another state-level piece that impacts schools and has not received a lot of media coverage is regarding the State Treasurer's Office. There will be a referendum question on the spring ballot to determine whether we continue to have a State Treasurer's Office or if we become the only state in the U.S. without this office. So this, of course, one of the, I guess, concerns that have been raised is that this would consolidate more power into the Office of Administration and that you wouldn't have the financial independent watchdog. So why, why would this impact schools? The Office of the Treasurer controls the Public Trust Fund, which controls up to $26 million that goes directly into public education. So that could be money redirected to other So that could be money redirected to other areas if this office is taken away. Some other things that are more notable is that it could put the billion-dollar Common School Fund at risk, as well as the University Fund. It's just kind of in limbo if this role were to be taken away. So in 2017, these two funds provided $32.1 million for public school library materials and technology needs, often the only source of funding for these resources for many school districts in the state. And talking to our library specialists today, this is something that, they have their own library specialist association that they're really concerned about. Also, these two funds provided $122 million in low-interest loans from municipalities and in school districts for public purpose projects, and $28 million to the University of Wisconsin system. So these do impact education in various ways, and it's important that you know that this will be on the ballot in April as a referendum question. If the Office of State Treasurer is removed, of course, what would basically happen is that all budgeting, contracting, payments, and accounting would be consolidated into one agency in the state, and that we would be then the only state without a constitutional finance officer. So the School Boards Association hasn't taken a stand on it, but other associations that serve districts have taken a stand, just so that you're aware. In terms of state law, there's one that I will update you about, which is the Teacher Protection Act. The School Board Association opposes this bill. It's planned for a hearing on Thursday, the 11th, in, at the Capitol. So you can use the legislature website if you wish to send your comments. The statement from the WAS, the School Board Association, is that while all teachers deserve to teach in a safe environment, this bill would unnecessarily upset the administrative chain of command in schools by allowing teachers to unilaterally suspend and remove students from class for up to two days without having to adhere to school board disciplinary policies, behavior intervention plans, IEPs, 504 plans, other service plans. So under the bill, teachers could override a building principal's decision to return a student to class. The bill would also inject school boards into decisions about student suspensions that customarily have been delegated to principals and district administrators. What it would do is it would allow teachers to petition the school board to schedule a suspension hearing before the school board if the teacher's request that a pupil be suspended has been denied by a principal. So there are a number of advocates across the state who are opposing this. All of the major public education advocacy groups and all of the major disability advocacy groups in the state oppose this bill. There is currently no Senate companion bill, and there are currently no cosponsors from the Senate who support this bill. But, so we don't know if it's, if this is going to gain traction, but it does have its hearing at the Assembly Committee on the Judiciary on Thursday. So if you do wish to write, just go right on the Assembly website. You can access the committee and send a message right that way. So finally, I will be presenting the voucher transparency resolution, which we passed next week at the State Education Convention. So that will be on Wisconsin Eye, and I'll make sure that we put the link out on district stuff so that you can watch. And we'll have all the school boards in the state represented there, so it should be a really exciting week of advocacy. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner Luganbill. That takes us to our consent resolution agenda. We pass this en masse, but board members can pull if they have, need clarification or more information. So at this point in time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2017. I only have to turn this way tonight. Minutes of closed session, December 18th, 2017. Human Resources Employment Report. Approval of head, oh, I'm gonna talk about that. We pulled the approval of the Head Start Continuation Grant because it's been extended. We'll look at it later. They just are, we're gonna put it on a later agenda, okay? So then the referendum bid approval request and adopt the new policy 813, home visiting. Okay?
I'll move 7.1 through, 7.2 through 7.7.
With the exception of 7.5.
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Beeka. Can we do a roll call vote? Patty, please? Thank you. Commissioner Hambach-Boil?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeka?
Yes.
Then that takes us to our individually considered resolutions. The first one is the resolution honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. A resolution was drafted by Commissioner Joe Luganbill for consideration by the school board. That draft was sent out to all school board members. We've all had the opportunity for input. The resolution would honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by proclaiming the 3rd Monday in January to be known as the, as Eau Claire Area School District Day of Service and Learning, a day to study and act on the legacy of Dr. King and the ideals that he represented. The district has never passed a resolution for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and this, so what we'll do is, we'll read it and then open it for discussion before we vote. And Joe, would you like to read it, please?
Resolution commemorating the life and achievements of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream of a country without prejudice and bigotry, where people would be accepted based on their actions and not on the color of their skin. And whereas, through his determination, spirit, and resolve, Dr. King helped lift souls and lead one of the greatest movements for equality and freedom in history. And whereas, in March 1962, Dr. King visited the city of Eau Claire to give a speech at the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire. During his speech, he called for President Kennedy to put an end to racial segregation and issue a second emancipation proclamation. Whereas, the 3rd Monday in January, a national holiday since 1983, has become known as a National Day of Service by which to honor Dr. King's legacy, with the reminder that we must preserve a nation which practices equality for all. And whereas, the Eau Claire School Board wishes to honor the lasting legacy of this great American, remember the ideals for which he fought, and commit to Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. And whereas, the Eau Claire School Board encourages the students and families of the Eau Claire Area School District to honor Dr. King by living out his teachings, as we continue to work for the day when the dignity and humanity of every person is respected. Now therefore be it resolved, the Eau Claire School Board honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by proclaiming the 3rd Monday in January to henceforth be known as ECASD, Day of Service and Learning, a day to study and act on the legacy of Dr. King and the ideals he represented. And witness whereof, the undersigned being all the members of the school board, have executed this resolution.
Discussion. Take a vote, please. Mayday, can you move?
Some moved.
By Commissioner Luganbill? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We have a resolution. So I have a copy of the resolution. I'd like Saleka to come up and introduce who you have with, and then we will, we will send this resolution to you, with you, to Monday's program, okay? Yeah, and introduce who came up. They're important people. Taking the resolution with me is our student board member for United Bridges, Naveya Lambert, and our board treasurer, Teresa Leaf. And we are grateful for this resolution and for the fact that we have, and the students who are in the King program represented every school in the Eau Claire Area School District. In the Juneteenth program, we also represent four different schools in the Eau Claire Area School District. So we look forward to working with the district on both the Day of Service and on the Martin Luther King Program. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. That takes us to our second individually considered resolution, the Little Red Nature Campus. I'm gonna pull that one up here. Basically, a community-based group. The Initiative for New Directions in Education, INDY, formerly the Little Red Nature Campus Team, submitted to the Learning Environments and Partnership Committee, that's our LEAP Committee, in July 2017, an education program proposal, their imagination narrative, to create an outdoor-focused, project-based learning school for middle school children, middle school-aged children. But the proposal is entitled, "The Little Red Nature Campus," and the original proposal identified Little Red as the school location. Although the proposed programs are not dependent on the Little Red location, the group shared the proposal then in detail at our last school board meeting. The LEAP Committee, of which I chair, is asking the school board to decide if INDY may continue program development with advisement from LEAP and others on behalf of the Eau Claire Area School District. We are voting tonight just to allow that investigation to continue in, with consent from the Eau Claire Area School District. So I'm gonna open it up for discussion of the board. Commissioner Luganbill?
Sure. Well, I, I gave kind of a mini Gettysburg Address at the last meeting, so I'm not gonna say much tonight. But I will say, I, you know, with what you're ask, with what the group is asking for tonight, being just to continue exploring and to have that blessing, with really no further strings attached for us, other than to say, we want you to continue exploring this, the feasibility of it, how we can make it happen. I very much support that. I also, I, I gave a, called Catherine Dux before she left on her cruise to Mexico, and we were talking primarily about the resolution stuff for the WASB thing, but I asked her about this, too. And she said she was of the same opinion, that she wanted to see it, vote it up, to continue to allow that planning process to occur, that exploration process. So as far as I know, that's what we're voting on tonight, and I very much am in support of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Beeka?
So, since I'm still relatively new to this body, and I'm navigating how to communicate with people in a forum like this, I'm just gonna try to be myself. I have some questions. One, in the exploration phase, would there be any advantages to discontinuing references to Little Red and perhaps titling it differently? And I ask that because we have heard from and been assured by the proposal authors in the planning documents that the site is not required for this program to be able to move forward. And so I was thinking about, consider, it's important for me to consider the merits of the proposed program regardless of the location of the program. And so I wonder if by continuing, continuing to frame it as the Little Red program, if that's causing some foreclosure in thoughts? And it's very nostalgic for people, it's very emotionally connected for people. And so is, my question is, is there any advantage in just kind of re-titling it so that we can think of the program as separate from the site? Because we've been assured that the site is not necessary. That's one question that I have.
Tim, and can we, can we bring our proposers up to answer some of these questions? Yes?
Can you answer some of those questions?
Yep.
Well, to your question, you're absolutely correct, that the location is, Little Red is our first choice. And when we, when we thought, but the program was developed first, and Little Red came second. And as far as how we go forward, I hope that, I, I hope that INDY is selling you on the program at the end of the day, and that, and that the location is, is as much a part of that as it, as it needs to be. How we feel about removing the title of Little Red, I would have to, we would have to discuss that, I think. I'm not, I'm not entirely certain I can answer that for sure at this moment, but yes, the program and the, and the location have been separate.
So for me, I'm, I sit on the DEMO and TRENCE Committee, and one thing I, I would like to consider is, what about, for example, the possibility of using Little Red as a solution to overcrowding at Prairie Ridge? That would be something I would want to consider seriously. Or in the, in the reply that you gave, and I, I appreciate the response that you, the written response that you gave to my questions from the last meeting, there's a statement in the response that you think the charter model, the importance of the outdoor space at Little Red, which would not be available at the existing middle schools. And I think I would challenge that. I think the three middle schools have excellent grounds, and that those grounds could be converted to something that, that could be needed, or, or other, other grounds the district might own. So I guess I, I would really like to push us to think about, again, the pros and cons of continuing to connect, or to connect this program, even in an exploration phase, to this particular site, and if there might be advantages to just leaving that open.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Logistically, if, thank you. Logistically, if we were to consider that, would that, would that be a decision that our board would make in this evening? Or would, would we, would that have to go back to that group, then, to ask them? I guess I'm just trying to, and then the other question with that is, if, if this group in their exploration phase finds that Little Red is not feasible, would they come back to us and propose a different name and kind of a different lens? Just wondering with those two pieces, logistically, I don't.
Well, we're in, go ahead.
I guess my thought is, we're asking for permission to proceed with the grant, and I think in that proposal of the grant, we would probably need to look at Little Red and its feasibility. And so that has to be part of what we work into that grant. So if it is separated, then that would be a very different grant writing process. I think contingencies are a part of our, have been a part of our planning process from the very beginning. As Anna presented in the slides during our presentation, we definitely see the avenues in which Little Red may not be the facility. And so as we, as we develop the program, I think we do need to develop it with a location in mind, because we will have to answer the question of location for the grant. And that is imminent, that would be, we anticipate in the next two months.
Commissioner Harder?
Presumably, this is one of several topics you're going to be looking at. I assume the question of how Little Red is kind of the elephant in the room throughout this conversation, and has been. I assume that would be pretty high on your list of things you're investigating over the next month or two of time you're asking for.
Thank you. So I, I guess I sit here thinking, Commissioner Beeka, with your concern, that certainly, in an exploration stage, what you brought up would certainly be looked at, okay? I think that's, that's what the discussion is tonight, is to give the leeway for that. I think bringing that forward as a board member is very important, because that just gives more input to what you really need to delve into as a, as a planning group. Commissioner Harder?
I guess I would add, having said, what I just said, is that I agree with your concern, with Commissioner Beeka's concern about tying what I think is a really excellent proposal, personally, to a site which is problematic at best. And, but I'd love to see it happen at Little Red. I know, I think I've heard other board members express the same thing. We'd love to see Little Red used in a different way than as a storage facility. I personally can't think of a better way than this. But now, does that mean it's gonna be financially feasible to do it? That's a part of what I guess you guys will be investigating.
Any other questions?
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Response to a comment. I'm wondering, Commissioner Beeka, if we removed Little Red from it in our exploration phase, like, how would you like to see it reframed, our program and our research, if we detached it from Little Red?
Well, I guess that that connects to my second question, which is really a more pressing issue for me. And it's how, for me personally, how to think about creating a new middle school in Eau Claire, and all the resources that go along with that, as opposed opposed to strengthening our three middle schools already in existence. So, I mean, honestly, I, I can't separate those questions in my own mind, either. And so that, the idea of strengthening our existing schools, so I, I just have many questions that I hope would be taken up in an exploration phase. I haven't, I guess, seen the answers yet, but even things, have any of the three principals been involved in this planning process? Will they be involved, at any point, especially in the exploration phase? Are we to assume that, we've gotten some information about resources, that FTE will come from our existing three schools, in order to support this new program? We've heard some things about, again, I'm, I'm trying to understand, really, what variables are focused, are under consideration here, and which ones are not. We heard some claims at the last meeting, that this would attract students into the district, but are the numbers such that there will even be allowed to be open enrollment into a program like this? Or will it be restricted to in-district only? I, I think about, our three middle schools serve approximately, well, enrollment capacity for about 3,000 students, compared to the 135 that will be here, once you factor in preferences given to staff's children. And so, when I think about making a district, if you want to think about the strongest it can possibly be, even to attract people into that district, it's in strengthening the experience for 3,000, not for 130. And so I just, I have many questions. And I, like I said, I, I haven't, I don't see the answers yet. And so I hope that you can speak to us more about, you know, why you would choose to go in this direction, as opposed to strengthening DeLong, South, and NorthStar.
Actually, a lot of what you're saying is reminiscent of what we spoke about at the LEAP Committee meeting that we attended, about when Dr. Hardbeck was there, and, you know, would principals be involved, and would they understand that there's a pull from their school, and how, you know, would that upset things? So, a lot of what you're saying is, is wise, and has already come towards us as advisement, too. So, I actually don't know what the answer is, as to how, like, your questions get answered, and that, that gets bridged, where we've addressed a lot of these, not that we've come up with the answers, do you know what I mean? But it, it all came up at the LEAP Committee, and, and then where do we go from here, in order to address your questions?
Commissioner Harder?
I just feel like this is a little bit of the chicken and egg problem, that this group has been dealing with, is, well, when can we talk about how to solve these problems, and start to engage the community in solving these problems? We can't until we have the board approval. Well, now, we can't have the board approval until we solve these problems, it's a chicken and egg. So that's sort of, I think, the intent of this request, to, hey, does this look good enough to, for us to invest our time, to, to move it forward, and try to answer some of these questions? And, and I think that's what we're voting on tonight.
Exactly. I mean, that's where I'm coming from, too, as well. I have another concern, in the sense of going forward, at this point in time, to get these answers, and to have these deep discussions, because these questions will be asked probably by more than you, Commissioner Beekah, too, is, we need to go ahead in order to do this, or this concept will go elsewhere. I mean, I think that the, the imagination narrative could be picked up, and we, and it could be run by some independent place, other than the Eau Claire school district. So I think that's part of why I want to have this conversation deeply, as well. Because if someone took a project-based learning program outside the Eau Claire school district, those would be 123 kids that we don't have, which would be an impact, also, on our budget. So, I think we have to have, at least have the conversation, and get those questions answered. Commissioner Harder?
Just one thing, it does kind of come back to our, just the, basically, the LEAP policy, which, the, the kind of the split-screen concept that's behind the genesis of that policy, is, the normal program, the universal program continues, and works towards improvement. In the meantime, there's experiments happening, and innovation, that happens side by side. And do we, are we happy to have that happening in the form of innovation zones? Are we happy to have it happening in the form of charter schools, like CVMCS? Are, are we saying, as a board, we're no longer interested in that? And that's the larger discussion about LEAP, I think. It's, it goes a little bit beyond just this LRNC question. Although LRNC is unique, in that it's talking about this somewhat problematic Little Red property. So, it maybe is facing those questions a little more strongly than some other projects might.
Commissioner Beekah?
I, I'll push back on your comments a little bit here. And I, I felt this at the last meeting, and I didn't voice it, so I will now. I think we might be, what, what feels like a little bit is happening here, is a bit of a, kind of a false dichotomy. And that is, we have, the idea we have, you know, traditional or standard education over here, on one hand, versus project-based, student-centered, on the other. And I, I think that's a false narrative. So I think what's going on in our three middle schools right now, is that our teachers use all forms of effective education, including project-based. So, for example, you have, you could, I know, as we've heard presentations about the Arctic Zone. So you go to NorthStar, and you have a teacher associated with the Arctic Zone, taking his students out to collect soil samples. And right there is a student who teach, or a teacher in the, in the standard science curriculum, who's taking her students out to collect soil samples. So I guess, part of, so I want to push back on the idea that these are separate. I think that it's co-occurring in all three middle schools right now. I think that's important. I don't, I don't want us to have a, I relate everything to research, so I don't want to have a, kind of a biased theory as our starting place, because we're kind of viewing things in that dichotomy. I, I, it's a question. And if we are falling into that kind of misconception, it's going to lead us down the wrong path. Because I don't think it's capturing what's really going on. The other thing, I guess I'd push back on a little bit, and this is in the written statement that we received this week, there's a, a sentence that says, "We think the time is right for an innovative public middle school in Eau Claire." And I think we already have those. And that's, again, I think that's part of that false narrative. But perhaps more to the point, when you say, and it is captured in the written statement as well, the idea that this would be, when you have a more autonomous, or nimble, small charter school, that we can pilot these types of initiatives. I think that would have been true if this proposal had come to us 15 or 20 years ago, when there was a paucity of studies about the effectiveness of these kinds of programs. If that isn't the case anymore. I mean, there's ample research, we don't have to pilot, any, kind of like with reinventing the wheel, these programs exist, and have for some time. And so, I, I don't think it's what, you know, when you said, you know, kind of, we can learn from what's going on over here, that's already been going on, and in many cases, for decades. So, I guess I, I would just say that, you know, if, if not us, then somebody else is going to, it's going to be taken somewhere else. I don't, that's a risk I'm willing to take, I guess, if it means compromising our three middle schools. So, that's all.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. What I meant was, also, I think that that, those, what you just brought up, Lori, we've talked about in LEAP, as well. Because we don't want to minimize at all what's happening in our middle schools. There's innovation going on all over our district. And we've talked about how, as a committee, we convey that to the people in our district. So, even last time, when we had people speak about their support for this whole project, my heart was with our middle schools that were here, and the principals that were here, because we realized that. So, it's in a way of messaging, as well. And we do have to have that deep conversation about why this would benefit all three middle schools, as well. And I think we've had that conversation, too. So, I hear you. It's, this is a big step.
I mean, again, it feels, sorry. Again, it feels like, these are basic, fundamental questions about the LEAP policy, that I hear. It's really less related to this than it is to the, really, the question of, of LEAP, which, not coincidentally, we have on the agenda for this month. So, I will have bigger discussions about this. But, it kind of does leave the question about what, what we do tonight. Because that question, that larger discussion is going to happen for a couple of weeks.
Is there anybody else who wants to add to this conversation, Tim? No? Okay. Dr. Hardbeck?
I, I think that the questions that have been raised tonight are certainly important. And we want to see this project go forward, in, in the district. And I feel like you've kind of been taken by surprise, about some of the questions, in terms of maybe not having an opportunity to talk among yourselves, about how you would respond to the questions. Is that, I think that's what I'm hearing, to some extent.
I guess I can speak on behalf of our, of the organization, and just say that I think what we, what we have as an organization is incomplete information. We are not, we're not in a position to really build an academic program, and a, and a school, and a center, for 150 students who may be disadvantaged in traditional programs. We, we can't do that without sort of an endorsement, without some encouragement by the school district. And so, we have incomplete answers tonight, yes. We have not been prepared to make those answers, because we don't have all the information yet.
Okay. And so my understanding is, the applications for the grant have still not been released. Is that correct?
Any minute. As we've been promised.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been hearing that for a while.
Yes.
For a while. You know, I'm, I'm wondering if, if maybe, just having some time to, to think about the questions that Commissioner Beekah has raised, and then coming back to the next board meeting, might, might give an opportunity for everyone to feel a little bit more grounded in this proposal. It's just a suggestion, because the applications are not out yet.
I, I guess I'd like to speak to that. I think the answers to the questions that are asked tonight are part of what we're asking the board to allow you to do. It's kind of where I'm at. And I personally think that that's all we're doing. We're giving, the Eau Claire school district is allowing them to pursue it, to answer the questions that you actually have. And I don't think waiting another board meeting's going to make a diff on that. Because we're not, we're only asking for the board to give them that opportunity to do that. Correct?
And to explore it with you, and answer those questions, we can't move forward unless we're allowed to.
That's right. Tim?
I think it's important also, because with the federal dollars that are coming through charter grants, when to be determined, and what that framework is going to be, is not yet known. But the proposal came out prior to the state knowing they were going to have charter grants. So I think it's important to realize that the proposal is not simply a response to charter dollars. It was already proposed prior to us being aware. So I think on its merit, the, the proposal is, you know, what it is, and, and not sort of dependent on, are charter dollars available, or do we need a chartered school? It's, those may be advantageous dollars, we could use to develop something, but it wasn't stipulated that that must be there to have the proposal.
Any other questions? Can I, can I have a motion from the board?
So moved. Do you need a motion more specific? Or is there a motion on the table that's on Board Docs?
I, we would just give a motion to allow Indy to pursue
Okay.
the process for getting these questions answered, and for that to come back to the board for further discussion. Okay? Do I have a second?
A second.
A second, okay. Can we take a roll call vote? Patty, please?
Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Luganbill?
Yes.
Commissioner Beekah?
Yes.
Thank you. Very good discussion. And you will see that, you will have that deep discussion with your board, your school board. Thank you very much. Okay. That takes us on to, we're going to adjourn to committee, and the first piece of our committee is, or the first thing on our list, is the Wasby Delegate Resolutions. Joe, are you taking us through those?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So, each year, the Wasby Policy and Resolutions Committee receives a number of submissions from member districts across the state, for resolutions to consider at the State Education Conference. So, several of them were not passed through of those meetings, but the ones that were, are here in Board Docs. And I can just go to each one, and I'll just read the title. And if you have a question about it, I'll, I can explain why, why it was passed through, and what it is. But otherwise, I think we'll just go, I'll just read each title. And all of these were passed unanimously by the committee. They pass them, they have a few different guideposts that the committee uses. One is, is it debatable? And one is, you know, is, is it a good resolution? The other is, is this going to be, is this going to cause pitting districts against each other? So the, they don't, we didn't debate the, the merit of the proposals in the committee. Rather, is this good to bring to the full body? So then, the full body will debate the merit of it. So, that's for our board now, to decide, is whether we actually support or don't support these. So, I'll just start with the first one. There are several that are repealing just outdated resolutions. So, one is repealing the resolution on the 190 days. And that's, simply, there, there's, is no longer the statutory requirement, so they are changing that there. The next one is repealing the piece about binding arbitration law. And that is being repealed, because it is no longer applicable after Act 10. The same can be said for Resolution 412, as well as Resolution 414, 418, 419.
Can I ask a question?
Closer. Yeah.
What took them so long to get these out of there?
This year, for the first time, they spent a lot of time digging, looking through all of them, to take out the outdated ones. And we, as a committee, could submit them. So, like, the next one, I submitted, which is 5.53, getting rid of the welfare benefits piece, that was put into place by the school board to, the, the concerns of that were regarding people who were in welfare programs, and it was put in place in late 80s, early 90s. But because of some reforms that were made to the welfare programs, it no longer is a contemporary language that really works at all. So, there's that one. And then, hours of instruction, this is a new one. So, basically, it's about allowing maximum latitude in hours of instruction. The school district that proposed it, was actually proposing it, because they have a charter school-type program in their district, and they want, they want that flexibility for their schools. So, this is just basically a local control resolution. So, this would also allow, the, previously, Wasby was not able to take a position on it, on this issue, because it wasn't specific in the resolution booklet. So this would allow Wasby to help local districts advocate for maximum local control, in hours of instructional requirement, without risking the loss of their state aid, as you'll see in line 43. This next one, about high poverty aid, this is pretty self-explanatory. That looks good. FTE calculation for revenue limit, this was proposed by a school district that has seen a great deal of growth spurts that happen, which actually, is something that could very well happen in, in a district like Eau Claire. You could see it, where a new development comes, and something like this would take place. Or you'd have a large opening of jobs, or a manufacturing company, or whatever. So, the, the goal of this is to add an additional piece. Currently, it was about the five-year, or three-year average that you could use to calculate the, the revenue limit. This would change This would change it to also add the current year membership as one that you could calculate it off of, to provide for a big growth spurt so that a district doesn't have to wait two more years or four more years to actually catch up to that funding that they need for their students. Okay. Next up. It's ours, voucher transparency. So I'm not going to explain that because you all read that. This one is about per pupil reimbursement for students in the voucher program. This would mean that the state would reimburse us for the costs that we incur for transporting students who are getting a voucher. So it's basically the rationale from the district that proposed it was these, this is a double dipping kind of situation that's happening right now. We're losing twice. So there's that. This next one, 18-07. There were several districts that proposed different resolutions about different groups. So there was one about support for LGBTQ youth, one for immigrant youth. There was, there were a lot of different resolutions. And the goal was, there isn't really a supportive statement like this yet. And so we thought, well, let's just do one statement that supports all students. And that's what you see there. This next one is about WIAA autonomy, so local control for the WIAA. And they, WIAA actually passed a resolution like this for us, supporting our local control in light of some, in light of a lot of anti-local control things that you see throughout the year. And that's why we're doing this as well, because there have been different bills that have placed mandates or tried to place mandates on WIAA or its member schools. And this one about the No Time to Lose report recommendations, that's a national report from the National Conference of State Legislatures about how schools can do more to be high-performing educational systems on a global stage and be more competitive. And it's a bipartisan group that formed this study and a bipartisan group that is making recommendations for improving state education systems. And a number of school board associations across the country are getting on board with resolutions like this to push for it.
That came directly from WASB?
That one actually was authored by the WASB board. They wanted that one.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, local fiscal control. This one is just making it broader, taking out some of the language that's a little bit limiting. So it's just saying, we want local fiscal control. And that we support any effort to undermine fiscal authority of local electeds, not just constitutional amendments. Next is recovery school districts. The reason that they changed this from state level to take that out is because there is the potential that you could see county-level authorities. And in some ways, you kind of do with what you've seen in Milwaukee, where the county executive of Milwaukee has been appointed by the governor to have certain authority over the district. So this is just opposing the creation of programs. You saw a lot of them in Michigan with Governor Rick Snyder. So that's, it's being proactive. Next is about referendum restrictions, pretty straightforward. Next is the, the teacher certification and licensure piece was pretty negative. And so we turned it into a positive that talks about what we do support in teacher licensure initiatives. And let's see, I think that's it. So what, I talked to Catherine on the phone because she won't be here and back in town before she's voting as the delegate. So I, I told her that I would let her know what we, what the general feel of the board was. But my, my personal suggestion, having been on the group, is that these are all worth supporting. One thing that might come up is there are other resolutions that were denied by the committee that could be brought back with a two-thirds vote when we're there. So, but we won't know whether to support or not support them until that day. And at that point, it'll have to be Catherine's judgment call. So, but with these, we can provide the guidance to her.
Thank you, Joe, for your run-through. I pretty much support all of them as well. Just want to let board members know that you can volunteer for that delegate spot if you want to get involved in that. I did it one year, it was really, well, two, I think. And it's been, it was, it was neat to sit with other school districts as they debate some of this stuff on the floor. So thanks, Joe. Any questions? You feel okay? Okay. Seeing none, we will go on to the stage curtain at the administration building. And I think that's you, Abby. Thank you so much.
All right. So we have a little bit of background on a stage curtain that's here at the Board of Education. And so just some background information is that the curtain was originally purchased back in 1925. That means the curtain's about 90 years old. And it was purchased to building code specs that were in place at that time. And so what that means is that the curtains must lower quickly and provide flame retardants so that if a fire should occur, they could lower the curtain and everybody could get out because it was really a stage curtain, and that's where people were performing at. And so this summer, Larry had come to me and mentioned that there's concern because there's asbestos in that curtain. And so the recommendation was we should be looking at possibly getting that removed and taken down because of that contamination that we're essentially exposing our employees to and staff to. And so we had started that conversation. And then I think that somewhere along the line, there was some discussion that there's potentially a picture of the confluence of the Eau Claire and Chippewa rivers on that curtain. And so there could be some historical value to that curtain. The problem is the curtain's been raised. And so we can't tell, is it an actual picture of the confluence? Is it a replica? And so we've had many community members and board members looking to try to find out and do some research on, is it an actual picture of the Eau Claire and Chippewa confluence? Or is it just kind of a placard or something that's on there? And we haven't found a person yet that's been able to tell us about that. And so those are kind of some of the discussions that we've been having before we move forward with the, what do we do with the curtain? And so because our intentions were to, you know, get rid of the curtain because of the asbestos, we did have Airtech, who is our asbestos consultant, come out and actually confirm for us that indeed there is asbestos in the curtain, and they've, and they've confirmed that. We also had Gopher Stage Lighting come out and look at the rigging of the curtain because it is 90 years old. Is it safe to be taking that, you know, trying to lower it? We're not sure that it's safe. We haven't been inspecting it because we haven't been using it for a long time. And so based upon Gopher Stage coming out there, like, it's very dangerous to try to lower that curtain and see what could happen. The other challenge in order, because of where the curtain's located on the stage, there's not a direct route out of this building. And so that curtain would have to be bent in order to get it out. And then that causes additional concerns about releasing asbestos and other things into our building that could be deemed unsafe for our employees. And so just wanted to make sure that the board is aware that we've had some conversations. I can't list them all because I don't know of all of them. But I know that prior to January 3rd, different people have reached out to Marv Lansing and asked him what he knew about the curtain. Wayne Hermanson has also been contacted, just historical people, administrators that have worked with us at some point to just be able to see if anybody knows what's actually on the curtain. And then last Wednesday, here at the board office, Carrie Kincaid, Carrie Ronander, Chris, Joe, Larry, Dr. Hardbeck, and I all sat down around the table and we're like, what should we do? Because we're having a hard time finding it out. And so we felt we had a good group of experts around the table and decided that we wanted to present it to the board and get some board input because there is going to be a cost to an organization, to us, or, you know, confluence or anything, to get it out. And then if we're going to try to preserve it, what does that cost look like? And we know that not very many of us have excess funds laying around to be able to do that. And so that's a primary concern. We also talked about if, if the curtain is able to be preserved and we want to do that, then do we solicit private donations to do that? And so Carrie is actually here from the Chippewa Valley Museum. And so wanted to invite her up to the podium with us because we talked about her experience with the Woo's Pagoda a little bit and wanted to make sure that the board was kind of aware of how that happened with them because she's an expert in the area.
Can I just add quickly before you go, Carrie? Just for explanation to the people here who are, who are listening, that confluence, because of what's happening downtown, looking at it as being something historical that they might want to use or preserve or display was kind of the gist of what started all this. So I just, and it's 50, is it 54 feet?
Yes.
Yes. So even to display it, so I'll let Carrie hit it from there. But I just want people to know why it came up.
Well, I, over three years ago, Woo's Pagoda structure came off the restaurant. And one of the things we learned from that process and something that we've done that I, as a curator, should know over the last 17 years is that to be a good steward of a collection or an artifact is that you really need to be able to have the resources to preserve it for a long time. That wasn't the case with the pagoda. So you need the resources and you need to have a long-term plan. So, but this curtain, it doesn't really fit that criteria, the criterion. The other concern for any historical object that's donated to the museum is this is tell a story that we wanted to tell. This theater curtain does tell some story about the school district and about theater in the school. But it might not be the best artifact for that. A blackboard might be a better artifact. So between the real difficulty in the resources to preserve this artifact and the fact that it might just be a stock curtain, as a curator and as historian, I would actually recommend not trying to preserve it.
Do we have some more questions?
Any more, Commissioner Luganbill?
No, I'll just back up what Carrie said because I went and bugged her at the museum. And that's when Carrie thought to look at the microfilm and the newspaper archives. And that's when we found the information on this. And yeah, it's very likely that this could be stock scenery from this company that was big. They, they did all curtains and things back then. And you could pay more to get a custom.
What did we pay for it? Because you looked that up, what was it? Because that was interesting to me. What did we pay for that?
We got a real, it was a real steal. It was $42.50. Forty, $4,250. But it was, you got the auditorium curtain, draperies, scenes, and all of it, all for that money. But yeah, so it's, it is likely, though, that it was stock scenery. So I also agree with her that, but it was good to look it up and find, try to find it out. But it, you know, taking that gamble, spending money on something that might just have been a stock image could be very foolish.
Now, there is, there is a cost to disposing of it. So that would, we would incur that. And you're going to go over that?
Yeah, I can talk about that. I don't think I put the numbers. Thank you, Carrie. I don't think I have the numbers in the presentation, but I think the total cost to dispose is around 13,000. Larry's nodding his head yes at me. And that's, again, just to be able to contaminate the asbestos and get it out of here. And, and I think we do have that built into our five-year capital plan because we never know when asbestos is going to come up. And so that's always kind of a line item in the five-year capital. And it routinely comes up. It came up a couple of times this summer with the flooring projects. And just because of the age of our buildings, we do always anticipate having some of that come up. And so again, I think, just my final slide, our recommendation is to also move forward with disposing on it because we don't really know for sure. And we've been able to figure that out, so.
I don't know, too, if people are aware that that, the stage is our closed closet for, and so we, we use that and people are eating out of there as well. So the asbestos is probably not a good thing to have in there, right?
I would agree.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Commissioner Luganbill?
So if anyone wants to, if anyone wants to donate to our curtain disposal fund, we'll set that up tomorrow, accept PayPal, credit cards.
Well, it, it, when it, when it is taken, we, we did a valiant effort on trying to figure out if it was worth anything. So the beautiful purple curtains are still in there, though. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is alternative education placements for students in special education. And I think that's Mandy. Hi, Mandy.
Good evening, everybody. I am the Director of Special Education for the Eau Claire School District. And I'm going to share some information with you on the alternative education placements for students in special education. This aligns to our strategic plan in many ways, but it is mostly aligned to the academic achievement, student social and emotional growth, and partnerships with families and communities. Move my notes closer to me. So I'm going to start us off with talking a little bit of understanding the role of the IEP team and what part they play in, in understanding the placement of students in special education. When a student qualifies for special education, they work with, there's an IEP team that is assigned to that student. And that individual education team is made up of a special education teacher, general education teacher, the LEAs, a representative from the district, which is oftentimes the principal, the family, the child if appropriate. Usually, the child starts to join IEP meetings as they enter middle school. And any other individual that has knowledge or special expertise regarding the child. If a student has qualified for related services like speech and language, occupational therapy, those service providers would also be part of the IEP team. There may be other individuals that will participate in the meetings. For example, if a family is working with a county social worker or perhaps a therapist, they may join the IEP team meeting for the discussion as well. The ultimate goal of the IEP team is to put together the individual education plan, which is based on the disability-related needs of the student. And the IEP is really the legal document that outlines the supports and services that that student will receive while receiving special education within the school. The IEP team must come together at least annually. But at any point in time, IEP teams can reconvene to look at the plan, adjust the supports as needed, and have conversations about what they can do differently to support that child. Oftentimes, when we're looking at students that may be struggling, the IEP team is coming together more often to help determine what the team can do differently and what supports can be adjusted on the IEP. A really key word that I want to highlight here is individualized. Every situation is different. Every child presents different disability-related needs. And that's what makes this sometimes so difficult to talk about, is every situation, every child is different. And there's not really a lot of blanket statements that I'll be able to put out tonight. But I will try my best to answer your questions. One of the things that IEPs look at is a concept of least restrictive environment. And what you see on the screen is the legal definition of the least restrictive environment. And what the least restrictive environment essentially means is that we want to try to educate our students with disabilities alongside our students without disabilities as much as possible. So if we're able to provide the supports and services to them as closely aligned to students without disabilities, we would consider that the least restrictive environment. The more we become restrictive within their programming, we would consider that more restrictive. So when we're looking at the least restrictive environment, there's two determinations that we make. That's the what the child should learn and where the child should learn. And when those two things intersect, that's determined as the child's least restrictive environment. And I'm going to break those down for you in just a little bit. One of the things that we recognize is that not all of students are able to be successful within the universal or general education setting. And so therefore, we need to provide a continuum of services for students in special education. An LEA is responsible, an LEA is the school district, is responsible for providing a continuum of services that allow IEP teams to offer different supports and services to students with disabilities. So if you look at those three bullets, the first one is talking about the range of available special education services. So that could be the instruction that is provided by the special ed teacher, that could be the services provided by the related service providers, or the supplementary aids and services, which are referred to as accommodations and modifications that a child may receive when they are in the universal setting. When we think about the continuum, we need to have a range of what those services look like. So a range would be least restrictive to most restrictive. So that could be receiving a service within the universal setting or receiving the service when, within the special education setting. Which moves me to the next bullet point, which is the location within the school where services are provided. So we would look at where that child can be successful. And we hope to, and want to start with trying to educate that child within the universal setting. Sometimes, when students are not able to be successful, we need to look at providing them with more of a restrictive program and educating them within the resource or special education classroom. And then the last one is the building or facility. So are, is the child able to be successful within the homeschool? Or do they? So are, is the child able to be successful within the homeschool, or do they require, um, specialized programming that can be offered at another building or facility? One of the questions that IEP teams, or the questions that IEP teams will often ask is, is the child being successful and are they making progress? And when a child is receiving behavioral supports as part of their IEP, another question that would be asked, is their behavior impeding the learning of others? So those are often the questions, um, as I'm going through this, that you will hear myself ask, that IEP teams consider as they're trying to determine the least restrictive environment for that child. So I'm gonna break this down a little bit more. Um, so again, going back to the least restrictive environment, one of the pieces of that is what a, a child should learn. So the order of the bullets do go from the top to the bottom, has the least restrictive to the more, most restrictive. So I'm gonna start at the top. Um, so again, we always want to try to provide, um, students with disabilities as their same-age peers. Um, so we look at the universal curriculum and instruction, which is aligned to the state standards, and offer them supports and services if needed within that area. And our hope is that they can be successful and are making progress. If they are within that environment and, um, after receiving that instruction, we would consider that the child's least restrictive environment. And as I'm going through this, um, I think it's helpful to keep in mind that, again, every child is, is different, and what makes sense for a student's least restrictive environment in reading might be more restrictive or less restrictive in math if needed. Again, everything is based on the student's needs and abilities. So starting at that first bullet, um, if providing supports and services within the universal curriculum and instruction, and that child is not making progress and not being successful, we look to moving, um, down to the second bullet, which would, we would consider, or IEP teams may consider it, a modified curriculum and instruction that is aligned, uh, to state standards. So, um, special education services may look like, um, curriculum and instruction is modified to better meet the needs of the student and, um, adjusted as needed. And at that point, that child may be successful and may be making progress. If they are, we found their least restrictive environment. If not, we may consider the next bullet. We may need to consider replacement curriculum and instruction. And when we look at this type of curriculum and instruction, the materials are significantly different than what is used in the general or the universal setting, but it is tailored to meet the student's needs. That type of curriculum and instruction may be, the IEP team may determine that's exactly what the child needs, and that is their least restrictive environment. The last one is the alternative academic, academic, or alternative academic achievement standards, the essential elements, and these are reserved for students with intellectual disabilities and autism with significant needs. And that is a separate set of standards that is aligned with college and career expectations to prepare those students for post-secondary success. And I want to be careful, not all students with intellectual disabilities and autism use these standards to align their curriculum, but it is available. Okay, this next part of that is where a child should learn. So we first think, um, start with the homeschool, and most of our students with disabilities needs can be met within the homeschool setting or their neighborhood school. Uh, we look at, in the, the environment within the homeschool, again, starting with the least restrictive, restrictive to more of a restrictive setting. If the child is being successful within the universal setting, if not, we may need to be move, um, move them to a resource setting in order to be successful. Again, answering those two questions. Is the child being successful and are they making progress? And if we are considering, um, behavior, if that's a part of their IEP, are they impeding the learning of others? Moving down to the next bullet, uh, the cluster sites within Eau Claire schools, uh, we do have, um, a few, number of cluster sites within our Eau Claire schools, and those are reserved for students with intellectual disabilities and autism with significant needs. Um, and one of the things that we're able to do is, um, provide specialized equipment, specialized services and curriculum to those students that require that type of programming. Uh, the next one is specialized schools, and this is a very small percentage of students. Uh, this is a school that specializes in a specific disability. An example of that would be the Wisconsin School for the Deaf, um, and we may place a student, the IEP team may just, may decide that their needs can be messed, be best met at a school that specializes in that certain disability. Uh, the Eau Claire Academy Day School, um, is a placement that we may consider if a student needs, um, additional behavior support in order to make them, uh, help them be successful. The Eau Claire Academy is also a residential treatment center. Uh, the residential treatment center serves the Midwest, and IEP teams and, uh, the Eau Claire School District, we do not place students on the residential side of the Eau Claire Academy. Uh, students can be placed there, um, if it's a family choice or a family decision to place, uh, a child there, or as determined by a county. Uh, the Eau Claire Day School is a private school that is accredited by DPI, uh, and we do, um, place students there along with eleven other school districts. Uh, they have, it can give, you know, ebb and flow a little bit depending on the transition plans of students that are there, um, but they are around thirty to fi- thirty-five students, um, depending on, uh, the number of students that they have will come and go. Teachers that are in, within the classroom are, have a special education certification, and they also have teachers assistants working within the classroom.
Mandy, can you clarify, is that thirty-five total students, or we have thirty-five students there?
The Eau Claire Academy within the given amount of classrooms that they have right now can service between thirty and thirty-five students, and as of right now, eleven school districts have students that are there right now. We do not have thirty of our own students there. Uh, the school is made up of four classrooms. There are two elementary classrooms, one middle school, and one high school. And the teachers that are, are in those classrooms have a special education certification along with the teachers assistants that support those classrooms. They do have a crisis team that will respond to behaviors when needed. Um, when students are there, they receive reading instruction, math, science and social studies, music, art, PE, independent living skills, and then social skills and individual skills that come from their IEPs, that they work with the schools and the people that know them to help put together some individualized planning on, depending on what their needs are. So that could be problem-solving, social and conflict management skills, emotional behavioral response, um, or any type of social skill that that child might need that's part of their IEP. Uh, the next one is day treatment, and again, this is for a very small amount of students. Um, this could be an option for an IEP team if a child is presenting, uh, some behavioral concerns, and the child could benefit from a therapeutic environment, uh, day treatment may be a consideration for that IEP team. We do, um, uh, seek placement within our communities, and there are options of half-day programs or full-day programs, and depending on the needs of that child and what that IEP team feels would be a good fit for that student, that would be dependent on a half-day or full-day program. The other piece, too, is those are community resources, and we also have to rely on there being space within those facilities or, and, or not. The last one is homebound, and that is reserved for students that are unable to attend school due to a medical reason, and, uh, if they're unable to attend, we would provide them services at home. Maybe it was due to an illness or a surgery, um, or sometimes homebound is also used for a transitional period of time in between placements, if needed. So now I'm gonna put this all together, uh, for you. So if you look at the slide, um, you will see on the bottom here, there's an arrow with least restrictive to most restrictive, and that is thinking of the concept of that least restrictive to most restrictive environment that we consider. This box up here represents the universal, eh, or general education environment, and students that are given supports and services within this type of environment. So IEP teams work together to determine the type of supports and services that students can be successful within this environment. Many of our students can be successful within this environment when given the right supports and services. If a child is, is making progress and being successful, we would consider this the child's least restrictive environment. When a child is, is maybe not being as successful as we would like, and we need to provide them more, we move along the continuum. This next box represents pull-out services, we're pulling them out of the universal setting and providing them with the supports and services that they need. Many of our students are able to be successful when given these supports and services. So along the way, as IEP teams are trying to determine the less, the best least restrictive environment, uh, the IEP teams are coming together and collaborating around the right combinations of supports and services. If students are not being successful, IEP teams consider what other supports could this child benefit from, and what could we do differently to better support them? You will see that these two boxes are the largest because we are able to serve most of our students within these types of environments. These two last boxes are, are the smallest because that, that is the smallest percentage of students that require that type of programming in order to be successful. So if we look at the self-contained, uh, box here, that we would consider students that have possibly that modified curriculum that I was referring to before, uh, if they are receiving behavior supports as part of their IEP, um, at this point, they're receiving significant behavioral supports in order for them to be successful. And then the last box on here represents the alternative school sites. Uh, again, we have a very small percentage of students that do require that type of programming, and you will see that it is considered the most restrictive. So what does this look like for a student, uh, that has behavior as part of their IEP? IEP teams will work together as a, as a team and move students through this continuum, adjusting the IEP and supports and services as needed. Ask the three questions. Are they being successful? Are they making progress? And is their behavior impeding the learning of others? Depending on the outcomes of those questions, determine where we go with that student. If the student is not being successful, we continue to move them through, the IEP team may continue to move them through this supports and services in hopes that we can find their least restrictive environment. Some students, when we look at the self-contained environment, um, benefit from that, um, when we're thinking of students that need behavior support on their IEP. Oftentimes, they're interacting with less adults, they're receiving their instruction in smaller groups, uh, their schedule and their program can be adjusted to better meet their needs, and some students are able to be successful within this type of environment, and therefore, we've, we've found their least restrictive environment.
Mandy, can I ask a question?
Yep, absolutely.
So, so how long, eh, are the parameters for make, or having it work in a setting and the decision made? I mean, I know it's variable, but is, is there some parameters there?
I wouldn't say that there are parameters. I mean, we certainly want to try a certain service or a support for a period of time for that child to adjust for, for that, uh, but it really depends on, uh, what that child is exhibiting or the behaviors that they have. Um, when we start to consider programming for these students, um, due to behavior, IEP teams do consider the intensity, the duration, and the severity of the behaviors, and depending on what those behaviors look like, again, every situation is different, and I certainly don't want to, um, generalize, but at, sometimes the student, the students presenting behaviors can be unsafe to students and staff, and that could continue on a, on a daily basis, where we need to reconvene, reconvene the IEP and determine what our, our next step's going to be for the student. At this, at this point, when an IEP team or an LEA has determined that a child could benefit from specialized services that cannot be provided to the child within, uh, their homeschool, we look at the alternate sites. And depending on the needs of the child and the presenting concerns, whatever it might be, the IEP team would then determine the best placement for that child. Does that make sense? Okay. So I wanted to share a little information about if a child was placed at an alternate location due to behavior, kind of the steps that we go through, um, to hopefully, at some point in time when they're ready to transition them back to their homeschool. So the IP, IEP team may develop new goals for the alternative placement. Ongoing communication between all members of the IEP team continues throughout the placement. At, at this point in time, our special education coordinators are involved with the child and the family, and, uh, ongoing communication, um, continues with them and the IEP teams to talk about progress, adjust the IEP goals, uh, talk about if transitioning is in the near future, we start to lay the plans for that to happen. Uh, once the goals have been met, a transition plan back to the child's homeschool is developed by the IEP team, and this transition plan looks different for every child. Some children, um, it may, may make sense for a child to transition at a break in the calendar, or it may make sense for them to do an hour at a time, or so they maybe are at their placement for two hours, and then they transition to their homeschool, and when that child is seeing success, um, we add more time. Again, every child is, is different, and every plan looks different. Throughout the whole time, the children remain, uh, enrolled in the Eau Claire School District, they're just placed at a different facility or site for a period of time. The goal is always to return the child to the neighborhood school when the child can be successful and safe within the public school setting. Questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Limbaugh?
So, um, with our, with, with the different locations that we contract with, um, what is the complaint process for a student or for a parent? Is it through us as a district? Do they have their own internal practices? How do we currently work through that?
I would say that the complaints of, like, programming or, um, something to do with the supports and services that child is receiving would come through the IEP process. If there is a separate complaint outside the IEP, uh, some facility, depending on the placement, have their own process for, um, expressing a concern, and they can always certainly reach out to me at any point in time as well.
This is, um, if I can, can I, this is a interesting, we were talking about this this morning in the context of the school resource officers, a complaint process with that, and making sure that we have the uniformity between the two entities on it. So, eh, currently, if a, if there's a complaint against, uh, a student is placed somewhere, a parent has a concern with their student at such-and-such location, and they do it through their internal process, do we always know that those complaints happen? Like, is there like an annual time where we go over things like that, or what does that look like?
I wouldn't necessarily say that there's a formal process for that. I do think the facility or the placement would, um, contact us to share the concerns, um, but there's not necessarily a formal process for that.
I, um, we have such a long to-do list for our Policy and Governance Committee, but I wonder if that might be something to talk about at some point, just to make sure that, because we, eh, of course, within our walls, we can, when we know what's going on, that's, that's one thing, but if they're elsewhere and they're still within our care as our students.
Right.
You know, making sure that we have that uniformity for all locations, I think, would be good. And that's just one takeaway so far from this presentation. I think that could be something worth exploring. So I can add that to our list for the committee and get your thoughts on it later on, but I'm just thinking that.
No, I think that's important. Thank you.
Okay.
Superintendent Hardback?
There is a process when things cannot be resolved through the IEP, it comes through sometimes formal mediation, um, and there's also a process through DPI, where if, if parents are and families are not, uh, satisfied with the action that the district has taken, they can appeal that to the DPI, and we've had some of those complaints over the years, and we've been able to resolve them, working with DPI and also working with the district.
Yeah, I, and I guess maybe the missing link that I'm trying to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but those are areas where the district can ta- has taken action, and then there's the recourse. And what I'm describing is maybe more situations where maybe the district doesn't know about a scenario, doesn't- doesn't have that ability to take action, if that makes sense?
No, it does make sense. And, you know, I think, you know, Mandy would agree. We want to know about those concerns as quickly as possible. Because special education is mandated through the IDEA, there are specific structures that are in place to protect student rights and parent rights.
I just have a question along those lines, just because we sat this morning with the SROs, officers working on that policy, is do we have an MOU or contracts with alternative sites for where we...
We do with the Eau Claire Academy Day School.
Okay. Is it a contract or MOU?
An MOU.
Okay.
And then we also, when students are placed at the day treatment programs, we do sign a contract with them.
Okay, thanks, Mandy. Any other questions? Commissioner Bika, sorry.
So a parent in the district contacted me with a concern about one of the alternative sites and I shared that concern with the board and Dr. Hardbeck. And the parent asked that the board consider a visit to the site. And I want to ask, can we honor that request? I would like to do so.
I think tonight, when we get finished and under the request for future agenda items, put it there, then it won't get, and we'll get that set up. Sound like a plan? Okay. Thanks, Suri. Anybody else? Commissioner Ludenbaum?
And I think it couldn't hurt too, beyond the one site, is with the other sites, opening it up, just talking to those groups and, hey, we'd be interested in stopping by. I think that anywhere where we have our kids, as long as it's easily accessible for us to go, probably not the schools down in Madison maybe, but the ones that are in our neck of the woods, especially trying to get to them and establish that relationship. I think especially since we're probably going to want them at the table as we work on a policy, you know, about clarifying complaints and student rights and, you know.
Any other discussion, further discussion?
I do just want to clarify, like Superintendent Hardbeck mentioned, that there is a very formal process when a family disagrees with the IEP process. So not to confuse your question, but yes, there is a very formal process that families can go through when they disagree with the IEP.
Okay. Thanks, Mandy. I think that's it. Usually you have input from the audience. I didn't ask after the resolutions or the curtain, but is there anyone out there tonight that would like to come up and speak to the alternative education placements of students in special education? Any input from... We take comments from the audience after each of these. Seeing none, right? I think I'll go on then to our 2018-19 budget projections. This ought to be fun. I think that's... Well, I try to be.
It'll be fun.
It'll be fun. Thanks, Abby.
Depends what your idea of fun is.
I know.
Right? All right, so let's talk about 1819 and where we are today, January 8th. We know what the state budget is and we know the increase that we're going to be getting per pupil aid. And so I just wanted to remind the board that we will see an increase of $250 per pupil. That's outside of the revenue limit and that will equate to approximately $2.2 million for us. And so I just wanted to make sure that we all remembered that. And then I wanted to talk a lot about the priority known expenditures and a lot of these things are...
Abby, before we go on though, can you go back to the last slide? I just want everyone to understand that the $250 provided outside the revenue limit means that this is per pupil and it does not fix the fact that we're still a low-spending district and still below the state average. So it was kind of like putting $250 per kid across the state, but it didn't delineate differences between districts and where we have been for the last 23 years. And I'm thankful for this, yes, very thankful, but you have to put it in the right context to understand that. And Marian, did you want to say something?
I just wanted Abby to clarify whether these were one-time categorical aids or whether they were, did they factor into our revenue limit?
They do not factor into our revenue limit. It is a categorical aid and we know that we're getting it in this biennial budget. This year, we got 450 per pupil and next year, it'll go to 650 per pupil. But after that, it's unknown what will happen because we have the two-year budget.
So it is possible that we could return to prior limits?
It is possible we could return to prior limits.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me.
And just so people knows, there's no guarantee here.
Correct.
Thank you.
The, I know it's not in this slide, but the piece about federal level is of course unpredictable. In this budget, we took a hit with the federal level funding. Do, is there any sort of, from the School Administrators Alliance, School Business Official Association, do they have anything out there yet about it? Or is it just too early to predict any of that?
I think as far as the federal things go, I think it's pretty early. I know we just got some notification last week that, you know, some of our title funds that we're expecting to get have changed as well. And in our budget, how the federal piece impacts us is we always budget our revenues to equal expenditures. But when those revenues go down, then if we need to continue those services or we want to do the same thing, then it becomes part of our district budget where it hasn't been before. And so it may not seem like it has a direct impact, but it actually does in the long run because it will affect our Fund 10, General Fund expenditures if it's something we need to continue. So we tried to plan and we've been having a lot of conversations and developing protocol to make sure we can keep the board informed as well as those changes come up. So priority known expenditures, and these are just a few of the major ones that I was able to come up with pretty quickly. Keep in mind, we have not really started into that deep dive in the 1819 budget process. We're just developing our timelines and our things right now. But the things that are listed here are things that are important to us and it's so important that I put technology refresh on there twice. So you're getting a double dose of technology refresh. I had to make an update and I got it on there twice. So I apologize. We'll get that fixed up for board docs. No, it doesn't add together because I wasn't sure how many things we would have. And so, but the technology refresh, those are the things that we talked about this year with the budget, the iPads that are not going to be supported for state testing, the Chromebooks and those things. And so again, this is a shot in the dark today at what do we know our needs are, but we haven't fully evaluated those needs, so that number could be very different. Today ballpark, I would say about 2.5. So that first number is where I would anticipate, as of today, where we would land. Salary level movement, that is based upon our 1718 salary schedule because that's what we have right now. And our staff is measured every January 2nd. And so we're still finalizing the January 2nd, 2018 numbers. So the staff that's calculated is the staff that we use to calculate our budget for 1718. So again, ballpark salary cost only, but just wanted to be able to provide the board with here's what that salary level movement would look like based upon the way things look exactly today. And we know that that will be different, but I wanted to be able to provide some reference into what do we think that cost would look like. The second technology refresh of 1.5, I'll get rid of that because that is part of the 2.5. Buildings and grounds, we had to cut out a lot of equipment for that in order to get where we got this year. So that's going to be mowers and tractors and things that we have identified, but there could be more. And so again, today, this is our best estimate without deep diving into what exactly are our needs. I was talking earlier today with the coordinators and one of the things that would be different for 1819 is year two of the mentor program. You know, we launched our new big mentor program this year and this is the first year, so we would have additional costs because that's a two-year program. We estimate that to be about $240,000 as well. Another thing that we cut out of the budget this year was musical instruments. I think you'll remember, two years ago, we decided we would start on a rotating basis, providing approximately $150,000 for the secondaries to purchase much-needed musical instruments. We cut that out of this year because we opted to do band uniforms for Memorial. And now we anticipate we would do North Band uniforms as well next year, but then how does that musical instruments fit into that, you know, kind of that need and that process that we had been talking about? And so again, this is a very high-level request right now, but also wanted you to be aware of, here's some really big-ticket items that are very important for our strategic plan and also for us. And I wanted to put them out there. I'm sure there's other things that I haven't identified, but these were the big ones that, talking to the main departments that we've got out there, that would be important to consider and remind the board of at this point in time. Any questions about any of these or concerns? Okay. Unknown expenditures, the CPI increase, which would affect salary schedules, that will be released at the end of January 2018. And so that's an unknown right now. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar, but each month, there is a percentage of maximum of a base wage increase and that changes every month. And so we talked about, do we try to list out what they all are? But they just change so much that I felt better just saying, we're not going to know till the end of January. And then we'll keep the board informed because that's a big, important process for moving forward and the communication plans that we have laid out for all of our staff. Health and dental insurance rates, we don't have that 5% cap anymore related to this year. And so we are expecting some preliminary renewals middle of this month that we'll be bringing back to the board and getting some recommendations as what do we want to do. So it's hard for me to predict what that's going to look like. I think we've done a very good job of educating the board and educating our employees on, you know, utilizing the health insurance and that true consumerism. But since we don't have that cap, it's going to be hard for me to tell you today what I think it's going to be because I really just don't know. We did talk to the insurance consultants to just say, you know, what have... They don't have any renewals yet for 1819, but in the past, they've been all over the board. We heard about one today that a district had a 70% increase due to some high-crossed pharmaceutical drugs there. And so I'm like, whoa, that's kind of scary. I think that's the extreme. My guess is it's probably, the standard has been more in that 10% to 20% range. So just something that, again, we need to continue to talk about. And we already have internally been having discussions about, okay, we don't know what that increase is going to be. Do we make plan design changes to keep it to a minimal increase? And so...
Have we looked at other design changes?
We've been looking at a lot of design changes. And so we anticipate, once we have that preliminary renewal information, that we will come to the board with potential options. We have been reviewing it very seriously for the last eight or nine months, knowing that we didn't have a cap in place and knowing our budget situation as well and just, again, in an effort to be transparent and what can we do to make good decisions for our employees as well as the district. The five-year capital plan, I know that was presented at the last board meeting and I know we had some conversations and some questions as far as the culinary labs and the costs. And I think you've been provided some additional information. I believe we plan to bring that back at the next meeting, but if there is some additional information, we'll make sure that you have that. Because again, you know, we've been targeting that 1.6 million each year in the budget and I think that the plan that was presented was about in that ballpark as well. And we've even learned a few new things since then and so we might need to tweak that five-year plan as well with some things that have come up with the cold weather and related. And so we'll be sending an update on Friday to the board as well. And so again, that five-year capital plan, we should have some more guidance after our meeting on January 22nd. Things that we're working on, OPEB budget development has been actively looking at OPEB and trying to see, are there things that we can do to impact our budget? We've been talking about it for a long time and it's about 8% of our budget. And we have been, the rating agencies, as we've been going to bond issuance, that's something that's been coming up in those rating agencies that we haven't made any changes. We're one of the few districts that hasn't made a change. We've been proactive as far as employees hired since 2008, but we still have a significant number of our employees that qualify for health and dental. And so we've been working with Linda Mont from Key Benefits to try to help guide us to maybe some potential changes that we could make that could impact our budget. The other thing that I kind of mentioned before was health and dental and plan design changes that we're working on. Nothing formal yet because we're kind of waiting for that preliminary renewal so then we can kind of put that plan into action. Our contract for our substitute teachers is actually up at the end of June and so we will be going to RFP for that service. It's a service we want to continue, but because of the volume and our purchasing manual and also just the purchasing guidelines that are from the state, that's something that we need to be putting out for RFP. So that'll be something we'll be doing and bringing to the board, I anticipate, probably in March because we need to do it early enough to have some time if we need to make a change. So that's another potential area that could impact our budget that we're looking at. We've been talking with our, with budget development about athletic costs. I know that that's been brought up quite frequently here and how can we get rid of fees? And so we've been looking at comparisons to other districts. How do we, you know, what do we charge compared to what they charge? What are their overall athletic costs? And so we'll be bringing some information back to budget development as well. If we were to eliminate athletic fees, that's about a $250,000 revenue stream that would be taken out of our budget. And so we've been talking about how do you, how do you handle that and what can you do differently? And I think the big thing to remember is that everything that is going through our books right now and we're reviewing the budget on a regular basis and just trying to identify, have we turned over the stone? Are there different things that we should be doing? A lot of our time right now is being spent on salary and Bennys because that is a very large portion of our budget. And to make an impact to our budget, you need to look at those items because they are such a big impact to our budget. But we're talking, I'm talking to other school business officials, just trying to see what are their ideas. I'm reading the news that's coming out and watching the legislation. You know, are there things out there that we can kind of be proactive and jump on the bandwagon? Are there other ideas? And so a large district, we have a lot more resources at hand, but that doesn't mean we don't have our share, our fair share of things that we need to work on as well. And so I just want you to be confident that we're looking at every line item on a regular basis and really digging into each location and the detail, probably every other month, just to kind of see where we at as far as our budget goes. How does that compare to what we think has happened? Have things changed? And so we're having those conversations regularly as also thinking about that big picture and are there recommendations or things we should be exploring to go forward and looking at our funding for 1819? That's what I've got for now. Do you have any questions for me?
I mean, I don't really have any questions. I just like to reiterate the fact that every other week, you get something that might be legislated that would impact our budget. We talked about the Common School Funds and if that would go through and be privatized and we would not have that available, that's almost a $400,000 loss to our district. And it's really the only money we have for media centers. That's, we rely on that. So I mean, that's, I just needed to say that. I mean, this is hard stuff. So I appreciate the update. I really do. Commissioner Ludenbaum?
Did you say that we're waiting still to get rates and possible changes from Security Health? Or we, do we have that now?
We do not have it yet. We are anticipating it in the next week. We have a meeting with... Yep, we have a meeting with our insurance consultants next Thursday. And so we should have some information and we're hoping to meet with the board after that. Dr. Hardbeck and I talked about getting a potential date on the calendar.
Thank you.
Is Security Health pretty aware that we have looked at, we're looking at other options?
Yes, yep, they have been very helpful for us in looking at...
Just in case, I mean, they've been great to work with.
Yes, and I would just say at this point, it may be a little bit premature to talk about other options because we haven't gotten a proposal from Security Health.
And they've been great to work with. I want to reiterate that.
Let me just be very clear. All of the options we have been looking at have been with Security Health because that's our current health plan. And so we can't be working with other carriers because they don't have our book of business right now.
And that's my point, Abby, is that until we have received our proposal for Security Health, we won't be reaching out.
That's an ethical thing. Yeah, got it. Okay. I need to, I need to know that. Thank you.
And then it's been a week now since they expanded the plan to cover mail, right? For no extra premium charge?
That is correct.
And that's for our employees already now?
That is for our employees already. Yep, and so that's one thing that we've talked about, when we've been talking about utilization and, you know, how that impacts our renewal. Because that change just happened January 1st, it's not going to impact this renewal. And so I don't know what that looks like because the way that the insurance world works, you know, there's a 90-day runout period of claims. So the information they'll be able to give us will be claims processed probably through September or October. And so again, they are, this is a much earlier timeline than we would normally get that information. They don't typically finalize it until, I think we bring it to the board in April typically. So, but we have, everything that we have been looking at has been with Security because they have our book of business and it's been a lot of what-ifs. And again, they're just what-ifs because again, your claims and your utilization is different every year. And so it's kind of that gamble that they're taking. But we have a spreadsheet. I kind of like to chuckle. We probably have about 45 different options that we've been looking at. And so there's a lot of things... And so there's a lot of things that we've been talking about, but likely, if we were to make some plan design changes, we would try to bring that down to three. And the one thing that I think is very important that you know is that we are, all of the potential options we've been looking at, we're looking at, how does it impact the district budget, and how many people and employees does it impact? Because if we can make a small change that affects very few people, that's much more favorable than something that will impact all of our employees just a little bit. And so just the rationale for some of those, we've had a lot of deep conversations and trying to look at that, and not sure where we're going to land yet because, of course, we need that information, but do anticipate, what we bring forward is that we've really been researching and looking at our years, the last three to four years, and looking at the number of people and a lot of data involved, which I love. But we want to make it simple, and we also, you know, are really, that's one of our primary goals, is if we need to make changes, then how do we do it to affect the least number of our employees?
Any other questions? I guess, you know, in your comment, your last comment, I would think of it two ways. That affects the least number of our employees, or it affects all our employees very little. So, right?
I would say yes.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? No? That takes us, thanks, Abby, very much. That was helpful. Is there any comments from the audience? Thanks, Patty, I always forget. No, seeing none? That takes us to a request for future agenda items? I have one. I wanted to put at some point in time, a discussion on supporting the End Child Poverty If, if we could have that discussion and how it's, you know, who's involved in it and whether the board would want to, I don't know if endorse is what I want to say, but that we would, we would embrace it as a, as a district. So I'd like to have that discussion. Dr. Hardbeck?
If, the most likely way that you would endorse that would be through a resolution. So you might want to bring that up through Policy and Governance first.
Okay. That makes sense. Joe and I can do that.
The other piece of it is that the Eau Claire Coalition for Youth has signed on to support the campaign, and the school district is a member of the Eau Claire Coalition for Youth. So that's all of the youth serving agencies in town, Boys and Girls Club, Children's Hospital, YMCA, all of them. So we can support it through that avenue as well.
Okay. Should we have that discussion or do it through resolution?
I'd do it through resolution.
All right, so we'll, we'll send that to Policy and Governance. Anything else from people?
The visit.
Yep.
The visit for the Eau Claire Academy.
Okay. Go ahead, Lori, that's your baby.
Oh, yes. So the board visit to the alternative placement site.
Thanks, Lori.
And given your schedules, it might be wise for us to set up a number of visits so that you're not, you know, it's not contingent on all of you being present. Right.
Would you want me to reach out to the, sometimes we have to fit around their schedule as well?
Yes.
So why don't I arrange that first with Lynda Berg, and then we'll get you some options? And I assume then what you're saying is you don't all have to be there at the same time? We've done this before. We brought several people through.
Thank you. And then who, Patty is Lori? So you want to stick around so we set for agenda setting afterwards? Okay. Go ahead.
And what is, how are we handling the demo and trans new members?
The final recommendation for, was today, and so the, the committee's appointed. So I've asked Abby to send me the email so that I can, so that I can congratulate the people that will be serving and thank the other people that have decided that, you know...
Do you want to announce those names?
I, I don't have them all in front of me right now.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll do it next meeting. Okay? I mean, they'll know, but we can, do they have to go, we have to vote on them too?
No, you just appoint.
Yeah. So I, they're appointed, so we can share that. Maybe we can send it out in an email to the board members tomorrow. Yeah, or Friday.
Friday letter.
Okay? Does that sound good? Yeah. We just finalized it today. I sat here finishing it up because I went back through them all. We had something to do with, was there some extend rating thing? So we finished it up. Okay? All right. Can I have a motion to, for adjournment, please?
So moved.